So we can have this. So we're so happy to see everybody joining us tonight. Our goal tonight is to be together as a community, answer questions for each other, figure out how we can support one another, and celebrate this amazing community that's our APH families and parents. Without further ado, and what we would love is for you to invite, we invite you to ask any question in the chat box, or just sort of raise your hand using your reaction, and we can see if you have any questions and you can just ask it to the group. Molly's gonna share a little bit of what's happening, and then Jan, and then we'll take questions from everyone, and we look forward to hearing from you all tonight. So Molly, I'll pass it over to you.
Great, thanks Dean. As Dean mentioned, this was really when we planned this a week or so ago, really was an opportunity just to check in with everybody and give you an opportunity to tell us how you're doing, how your daughters are doing, because you know, we are interested, we're concerned, we want to know, we want to know what we can do to continue to support everyone in our community. So we have a couple of updates, mostly because life just kind of gets in the way and throws some things at us. So I know everybody received an email last night regarding our little bit of a change in our schedule. So first was the snowstorm. And then we did have a little hiccup with our HVAC system. One of our fans ended up burning out and just caused a rather nuisance odor throughout the building. So it was not something that we wanted to have everybody around. Nothing toxic or dangerous or anything like that. It just, it doesn't smell very good in the building. So we're in the process of taking care of that. So that was the reason for last night's email that just put us remote for the rest of the week. So we have, we have a company and that's kind of just doing that, that cleaning. So again, nothing to, nothing to be concerned about. Everybody's safe and the building is fine. As we were talking about the move to a remote situation really for all of this week, one of the things that we were, became, you know, we were aware of was that this was going to, once again, have our juniors and seniors, and especially our seniors, be off campus for yet another week. And they, I think of all of the classes, just the way the cohorts and the holidays and snowstorms and all of that has worked, have been the ones who have had the least amount of time on campus. So again, as we thought through our change this week of having the remote, we ended up switching to cohorts so that we could get our juniors and seniors on campus, beginning on Monday for that week. And so we made that swap. That, as you can imagine, was a little bit of a chain reaction also about some professional development days and some other days off. And again, we kind of tried to lay out and think ahead about the impact that it would be on a number of classes and throughout the next couple of weeks. So that was the reason for the changes. I'm happy to talk more about any of that if people have questions. So and I think that was really the basis of the email that I sent. Again, if anybody has any questions, let me know. I know, Dee, we'll probably get to some other questions around some calendar. I think some people dropped that in, sent us an email. So we'll get to that in a minute. Maybe I'll just turn it over to Jan with kind of an update of where we are kind of finishing out one semester and starting up another one.
Sure. So hopefully you all, so APH is on a semester system. So we do report cards at the semester. Our advisor conferences that happen at the midpoint of the semester are always our sort of check-in period. So our fall semester ended on January 22nd, and report cards were posted on Monday. The kids got a chance to look at them first, and then we opened them up to parents. So on the same day, but they're still there. The kids always ask like, can I get a look at those first? So we did that. And so you'll see the letter grades as well as a narrative comment from the teachers. I ask all of you, make sure you read those narrative comments. The teachers spend a lot of time on those and making them specific to your student. And I think that's important. We encourage the students to do so as well, but sometimes they just look at the grades. Also know that there are a variety of ways that you can support your student or they can be supported at school. So certainly the classroom teacher is the go-to for any hiccups that they were having or any stresses that they're feeling around the material. We do have Callie Reynolds, who is our learning support specialist. She's available every day from 11 to 4. She is virtual, but she has a very busy calendar. And, but she is terrific with follow-through. We'll talk to your student, also email you about the progress and those kinds of things. So we have a peer tutoring group. So we have peer tutors in every academic area. They're phenomenal. And so sometimes if students are feeling like they don't understand something and their teacher keeps explaining it and they keep getting stuck, sometimes just having a peer explain and putting it in their own vernacular is helpful. So know that that support is there as well. We have resource periods throughout the day and also after school. So all of that is available. If you have questions about a grade or comment your student received, just email the teacher and start with them. And we can work through any questions you have from there. In terms of calendar, we did move the faculty professional day, which was supposed to be next Friday before the three-day weekend. We did move that to the 19th. We pushed it back a week so that we didn't impact time on campus for students as much. We, and there was also a question I know sent in ahead of time about calendar dates. Those are on the My APH calendar. There was an oversight there, so all of the major breaks are there. The only thing we've changed is the professional day before the three-day president's day weekend. The last day for seniors is in fact, May 28th. They have a senior week after that. The last day of classes for all students is June 4th. Then there's their exam week. Grades nine through 11 do sit for exams or final projects that next week. So, but all of that's on the My APH calendar that you can find on the resource board. Oh, the one more thing I want to add. So some families have asked if my student wants to be on campus outside of their cohort week because they feel like they need some extra help or time on campus. If you will communicate that to me, the way we, for most of the time it's yes, absolutely. You know, come if you need to come out of your cohort week. But we also have to look at things like transportation. We do keep an eye on the class sizes. But if you have questions around that, if your daughter or student is feeling like they want to be on campus, we are looking at those as we're able to. We are still being mindful of our numbers and our safety in the building. But please let me know.
There's a couple of questions already in the chat, so I'll ask those out there. Jan, will the kids have president's day off? If so, are the freshmen and sophomores only in person for three days?
Yes, the students do have president's day off. I think that sometimes families do plan for that, that time. Some families have already made plans for that time. So we didn't take away, we didn't turn president's day into a school day. We just turned the professional day into one. So yes, that means that the freshmen and sophomores are only in person three days that week because of the professional day at the end. I know that feels like, oh my goodness, rats. The juniors and seniors have been actually more heavily impacted by those breaks than the ninth and 10th graders. So we were trying to sort of even that out a little bit.
And if there's someone to call, if they've already made an appointment or you know, it was something that was initially a day off and now a school day, just please send that information along to the advisor. But if a student is not going to be in school, you need to call, or it's going to be dismissed, call Ms. Fielder at the front. Call the main number or send her an email and let her know that your student's not going to be there or needs to be dismissed. Jan?
Yeah, and a question got raised last night. Somebody responded back to the email about, oh my goodness, I had made plans. You know, the week that my student was virtual, you know, I made plans and now they're supposed to be on campus. I would keep those appointments. Appointments are really hard to get right now. The option of Zoom is great. So you know, and if they need to come on campus during the week, they might have been off because they need to meet with a teacher, that's fine. We can work all of those things out.
Great. And then there've been, there are a couple of questions about, and Molly, maybe you can answer this. Any possibility of students attending in-person schooling at any point of all the students attending? And then I know there was a question about prom as well.
Okay, so we'll start with the one of potential of all students be on campus. So this really has a lot to do with the vaccine and the administration of the vaccine. I'm sure everybody's hearing it. The K-12 workers right now are, we're in the phase, we're in phase two of vaccine distribution, and K-12 workers are part of that phase. So we are in touch with the Board of Health on a pretty regular basis to find out when we are on deck as the faculty and staff. And once we figure, once we have those dates and understand that, as quickly as we can get our faculty and staff vaccinated, then that will give us a date by which we can let everybody know when we can all be back in person. So that is the plan. We're waiting to, you know, as soon as we get the information from the state Board of Health, and we stay pretty close with them, as you can imagine, at all times. So I don't have a date, but that's the intent. So as soon as we can do that, we want to. In terms of prom, it's, we, and maybe I'll just tie this into graduation and baccalaureate as well. So graduation, baccalaureate right now are on the calendar for the 10th, baccalaureate graduation, for the 10th and the 11th of June. We are holding those dates right now. Last year, we did a combined baccalaureate grad and graduation. We have our first meeting of that committee, I think, the end of this week. So we're gonna start trying to dive into and kind of put stakes in the ground as best we can on different parts of that. It's a little bit difficult as we still, you know, there's still a lot of moving parts. So we're gonna at least nail down what we can. We decided that we would hold those two dates. And since those were on the calendar and people were planning around that, and then we can figure out where we go from there. My guess on prom is that, and we've had brief conversations about this, my guess on prom is that we're gonna have trouble with venues outside of APH. So what we've been thinking is that we will have APH, which was in its day, quite the party place, is, so you just have to Google back to Ruby Boyer Miller back in the 30s. And so the, I think the initial conversations we're having is to somehow host prom onsite at the school. I think it's a lovely venue. We've done other really nice events at the school. We've had weddings at the school. So I think that's a definite possibility. But we're not hearing a lot of promising things on some of the venues that we would traditionally use. It also gives us a nice opportunity to put it on like a Saturday night instead of a Thursday night. And so there's some really, there'll be some benefits to that. So that's what we know now, more to come.
Great. And then there was another question or an idea about potentially having the seniors on campus from Friday, from March break going on. And I think that that's something that we can explore as well. As far as the party house, back when we first started at Penguin Hall, I ended up asking the archivists at the Sister of Notre Dame how they came up with the name Penguin Hall. And they said, well, Ruby Boyer Miller had such fabulous parties at that house that all the men in tuxedos looked like penguins. And that was one of the reasons it was called Penguin Hall. But just, just so you know, so yes. And John's right, those nuns and novices did know how to throw a party too. So I don't, there are any other questions, there are no more questions in the chat. Any other questions that were emailed in that we haven't tackled? Just look one second. The calendar we've addressed. Service learning, there was a question about service learning. Jan or Molly, did you want to talk a little bit about how we're doing?
I think Kat's on here, maybe she can address that.
Wow, throw her right, throw it right.
Somewhere. Sorry, Kat.
Put that drink down.
Sorry, my lighting is a little off here. Hi, everybody. You can see my picture of Dolly Parton in the background. But so in terms of service learning, the way we're sort of re-envisioning things, especially because service learning is much more difficult to execute in a COVID world, is sort of trying to think through ways that we can not only start kind of thinking through service to school, but also having the kind of service learning conversations about social justice and different other sorts of issues that we can be having kind of as the community so that we can kind of start those conversations about sort of all those topics that go into what you would kind of learn at a service placement in terms of whether that's, you know, food security or housing or anything else kind of along those lines, and start having those conversations with ourselves so that when we can finally actually go back out into the world and do some of the great things we've been doing as an APH community, that there's also sort of that kind of education piece that goes hand in hand with it.
I think if I could just add to that too, I think one of the things that we, as we've been working with Kat and others in student life, the part of the philosophy was not about just having students check off a certain number of hours or boxes when it comes to service learning, but really to, to really think about what are those issues and concerns that are, that they're passionate about and really want to, you know, and really do something about. And I know that Kat's been doing a lot of work, especially with the ninth and 10th graders, and then Bridgette with the, with the 11s and 12s, to really kind of think about the things that Kat was just talking about. So I think it's really important that we think about the meaning and purpose around it and not just the number of hours. So that, you know, I think that COVID's also given us an ability to kind of make that shift as well.
Thanks, Molly. Jan, there was a question about Strava and points. I know Nicole's on here too, but if you could, do you know how that's?
Nicole, do you want to explain Strava and the requirement?
Sure. Strava, the app, if you log on and look for Circle the Globe with Penguin Hall, you'll be able to join our club. And from there, I have been able to find each of the students who's part of the fitness center and track, help them track their hours. If any of the students have a question about what the, what their hours are right now, feel free to reach out. We actually celebrated the first student to finish their workouts for the, for the fitness center just Monday. So we sent an email out celebrating them and all that they've accomplished so far this year, finishing their fitness requirement before second semester was a huge accomplishment, and we were really proud of them. So happy to celebrate and share any updates with that. As far as the Strava app goes, for every mile or like every workout that is submitted on Strava, over a mile, they'll get a workout added to their fitness requirement. So just keep me in the loop. And I think open communication lines with me for those fitness center hours will be very helpful.
And Nicole, since you're here, can you share a little bit about what the spring sports offers, options are and how students can get involved?
Yes, before I answer that, yes, John, you can definitely join the Strava app. We're happy to add your miles to our goal. And we've been adding weekly updates to the newsletter with every mile that we've gotten. And we're getting pretty far. I'm excited to see what we do when the snow melts and we're back out, outside doing laps. As far as the spring goes, we're really excited to get the spring start. We have our traditional spring sports. We're doing the inaugural season of lacrosse. We have tennis, we have track and field and softball. We're also running the basketball season this spring outside as well as bringing back grass volleyball.
Great, thanks Nicole.
I feel like I froze.
You did, but I think, I think we heard, I think we heard everything, so I think we're okay. I think the bottom line is if anyone, parents are invited to do Strava too, and that counts for our circling the globe. So we would love to have as many parents on. And it definitely counts and helps. Nicole, were you gonna say something else? No? Okay.
I see Heidi was asking about first day of school. Oh, we're working on last day of school, Heidi. I'm not, I, actually, we haven't planned, we haven't worked on the calendar just yet for next year. There were some questions around convocation happening because there are a couple of religious holidays, I believe, that are falling during the traditionally, when we would have convocation, and we're trying to be respectful of that. So we started the conversations but have not come up with an answer yet. That is something that probably by the end of February, we will have that calendar draft. Jan, would you say that's probably, I think that's a reasonable, I think that's about the time usually we have it out.
That's usually the time it goes out because typically convocation is the day after Labor Day, but that's also when Rosh Hashanah is this year. So we want to be respectful of our families who celebrate Rosh Hashanah. So we are, we are working around our calendar.
There's a question about tennis and the tennis venue. Has that been secured yet? Molly, Nicole, do you guys want to address that?
I'm happy to. So we have not been successful in having any venue, find any venue off-campus. We are looking at, similar to what we did with volleyball, where volleyball was on grass this year. We believe we're gonna be doing, probably do tennis on asphalt. And we'll be doing that onsite on our campus. So we've, I have dropped every name I know to every person I know around the North Shore, and there's been a number of them. And I just, we can't get any court time because of the restrictions on the lower numbers of participants at the different facilities. So we just kind of gotten stopped at every, every turn there. So rather than not having tennis, which is really a very popular sport, I think we are gonna work on having that on campus.
Great. And there was another question about volleyball going to be offered on grass. Nicole, is that something that's happening this spring as well?
Oh yeah. We're gonna put the volleyball back out on the grass in the lower field in the fall. It was such a popular offering, and there's really no better time to do volleyball than in the spring. So I'm really excited to bring that back.
Great. We're, we are excited to have lacrosse this, this spring on campus, tennis on campus, volleyball on campus, and anything else we can do on campus. It's, it's a good thing. So there's a lot of fun in creative and innovative ways we've been doing. We're planning athletics for the spring. Okay, those are, those seem to be the questions that have been asked. But we're here to help. Are there any other questions that families might have or ways that we can support your, your student in a way that we could help? There was a question about, one benefit to the pandemic that we've noticed is that kids using Zoom for virtual get-togethers, homework studying, or just chatting after school, will APH continue to use it post-pandemic? I think that Molly and Jan, I believe that's a service we hope to continue. We know it also can work in snow days. And so, you know, having virtual options is good. Oh, there was another question about yoga. Nicole, is there any possibility of yoga in the spring?
Right now, yoga would be offered with the fitness center. I actually spoke to Coach Michaela today about doing more yoga and having more offerings since that is a huge draw to the current winter fitness center offerings. So if you have your students stop by and kind of talk through what they think a yoga kind of requirement would be, I think that I'm willing to talk through any of those kinds of ideas with our students to get them excited and involved in the sports.
And we, we do yoga on Wednesdays, right Nicole? And I think we're opening it up to any other student that wants to join on a Wednesday and definitely join, join yoga.
Yoga's being done online already currently, as Dean said, on Wednesdays. Coach Ariel Hall has her Zoom link open. We just need to know who's coming so that the Zoom link is shared with everybody who wants to join. And then we all do yoga. I participated last Wednesday and had an absolute blast with everybody on Zoom and in-person. And the video was, was great as well, and it's really easy to do from home. So anytime that somebody wants to join, feel free to just reach out and ask for the links. And I'll try to find a better place to put those links so that they're readily available for everybody.
And if you're, and if your daughter's on campus and wants to do yoga on a Wednesday, they're welcome to join the other students. Jan, there was a question about where the report cards are?
Yes. So I'm actually, I always look at my APH from a faculty perspective. So now I'm looking at it from a parent perspective, so I can tell you. So when you go to my APH as a parent and you click on your child's name over on the left-hand side underneath, you'll see their photo, you'll see progress, and then you'll see performance. It says transcripts, ignore that. It doesn't, it doesn't feed the actual transcripts. But if you click on report cards, that's where your student's report card is. So My APH Parent Portal, so go to parent, and then you'll see performance over on the left-hand side. And the second little green dot says report cards, and that will take you right to the report card. If the student is 18, can they write to request? No. In a word, no. We do need to hear from a parent. So you can send Beth Fielder at the front desk an email, you can leave a voicemail. But we do need to hear from a parent. I recognize that they're 18, but we also have responsibilities and we want to make sure. Having been an educator for a really long time, I have learned that you really need to hear from a parent if somebody's gonna be absent.
Things I encourage you to throw into the chat or raise your hand and mention is some, you know, do you have some ideas of things that we can do to support you, to support the students? You know, we had the Winter Fest a week or so ago, which was a way just to say, we just need some, we just need some good fun. And I think it was successful. I seem to think the students had a, had a good time. And we'd love to hear your ideas on that and, and other ideas that you might have. Don't know if we can do them all, but certainly we try. And what do you need? What do you need as parents? Because this is, you've got your, your students at home where you usually wouldn't have them at home. And that has to be trying. And I am, I am empathetic for sure with that. So, you know.
We tried to do flooding for the seniors yesterday, but it didn't snow here.
We can add some of ours. Yeah.
We were gonna send everybody to Kim's house. Send all the seniors up there because you guys got banner snow. And then they could hop over to Taylor's house with Dana. But how disappointing was that? I was ready with fire pits and hot chocolate and all of that, and then get a big bust here.
They were disappointed too. So I think that whole idea, my two cents would be to maybe even do that on a class-by-class basis. And maybe not even during the day. Maybe it could be, I don't, I mean, maybe it is during the day or maybe late on an afternoon. I just know the kids loved the fire pit thing and they loved being together. And so I think any way that you could probably get that in in some way, shape or form, even for like an hour and a half, the kids would love it.
We definitely will. We just need, we just need Mother Nature to help us out a little bit.
Well, I think if there's not even snow.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, it's just a chance for them to get together. The fire pits can keep them warm. They get a pot chocolate, they can bring blankets, you know, just being on campus and being outside. They don't need the snow.
Good idea.
We are, we are definitely looking for more social activities to do on campus, those types of things. So feel free to email us any ideas that you might have or just, and or give us a call. We'd love to hear your ideas. You're absolutely right. Beth Fielder is a goddess at APH. We are so grateful for everything Beth does in coordinating transportation, which has been such a challenging part of school this year. So we are so appreciative of Beth, and thank you for her. of Beth and and thank you for her shout out. And we're so glad that everyone's enjoy, our students enjoyed Winter Fest. It was definitely an opportunity to hear a lot of laughter and have it feel like for a moment, all of us felt like it was, there wasn't a pandemic as we were listening to everyone laugh and play outside in a really wonderful way. So that, that was good.
I was just going to offer another suggestion as I'm thinking of it. You know how you guys put the tents up at the end of the year? If there's a possibility, I know it's not a cost thing, but maybe adding that as the weather definitely gets nicer and people can get, you know, maybe there's some way to have the kids. Like when we did the music performance under the tent and things like that, I think could be done safely if everyone's separated and maybe hopefully that would be something, because that was so fun when they did the performance. Not last year, of course, but the year before.
Yes, yes, for sure. And there was a question about theater. They are doing music and theater this, this winter and spring. They are doing some auditions right now for a few plays, but there's a planning for a Spring Follies, I think. Is that, is that what we're hearing? Because Spring Follies, which students will be able to have little music, like do music, little vignettes as well as some theater. So we are, so there are opportunities for students to continue doing theater this winter. And we encourage, if your student is interested, please reach out to Mr. Crowley or Ms. T, because I know they are doing a lot to create and keep music alive. Oh, there's a question about colleges, Jen. When seniors decide on college choices, some type of school recognition and then wearing their swag on that celebration day, I think that's a really great idea.
Yes, we've done that. And I will, I'm sure Dr. Hidalgo has that in her bag of tricks. She knows best like when everybody's going to have some news that have, you know, the, the common reply date is, is May 1st. And so I'm sure she's got that in her bag of tricks to, to figure out when that celebration day will be. There's a lot of good news. There she is. Hi, Dr. Hidalgo.
Hello, everyone. So yes, I know that that is something that's do.
Oops, you froze.
On aware with prom and what it should be, we should have all of the results by, by April in terms of where everyone is going and actually deciding on a college is May 1st. So around there is when we will have a more definitive answer for everyone's choice.
Thank you. We also planned, Dr. Hidalgo, we also plan on doing some parent events in the coming months, sort of on a in the evening, and we'll be letting folks know about what those will be, right, coming up soon.
That's right.
All right. Well, are there any other questions or concerns or if not, we'll, we'll let everybody go and we look forward to staying in touch with each other. And please feel free, if you have any other ideas, to to send them to us. Molly, Jan, anything else?
No, I, I just want to say thank you all for joining us tonight. And it was really, this was great to have so many people, people on. And it really is, as Dean said, if there's anything that we can do, please just reach out. We really are here and want to hear from you. We miss being able to see people's faces and be able to interact. You know, in past have had great Parents Council where we've had this opportunity to come together and we're just all, I think we're all suffering from that. So we're just trying to figure out how we can come together in some way.
So when you send ideas for things we can do to support your kids, if you have ideas of things you'd like to do as a parent body to get together in a virtual format, you know, cocktails and online games or something like that. I love code names online. Yeah, if there are things that we can do for all of you to to get connected and get to know each other, that'd be great. Come to school and leave your kids at home. I love it.
We are still hoping for a murder mystery evening, too. That's something that is still on the table. And we, we definitely, to Jan's point, like if there are some ideas of some virtual nights that we could do or we also want to do a parent paint night sometime soon. So there are those, the hopes and.
Colin's got his thumb up. For anybody, if you see Colin McGuire on your screen, welcome to Colin. He is our new studio art teacher. So there is his face.
And it sounds like he'd love to do a paint night, especially if there's some Penguin wine involved.
There, there he is in his studio.
Wonderful. Thanks, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. We appreciate it. So good to see you. Have a wonderful evening and we look forward to talking with you again soon. Good night.
Good night.
Bye.